All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two Select Board Meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency as amended by Governor Baker on February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by the board and commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards quorum. This meeting is broadcast live and recorded on Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast ninety-eight and Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website at www.easterncat.org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching at the bottom of your of your computer, you will see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching from an electronic device, please pose any questions in the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal, and please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. Um, if you are at home and a question comes up, we won't answer it live on uh the call, but please send an email to us at selectboard@easton.ma.us, and we will get back to you. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stebbins.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. Terrific. So the first thing that we have on the list is um our age-friendly certification. And I'm going to move over Kathy Adler, who's the Chair of that committee. Give her a second. Hi Kathy.
Hi, everybody.
Hi Kathy.
Sorry, I've got I've got the uh got the sun in my eyes here.
Well, the last we were here, you were telling us about the action plan that uh that the committee had finalized and the Select Board adopted. And soon right after that, you got some great news to share with us.
I did. We um after making just a a few little revisions, we um uh submitted the action plan to the AARP, um and we uh recently got um a message from them basically saying that we were certified for the program. I'll read you what Antron uh Watson, who is our age-friendly Director for Massachusetts for AARP. Um, he said, I hope all is well with you. Our national group has reviewed Easton's action plan, and it's been approved. The team said you all did a great job in understanding what residents needed and wanted and came up with ways to deliver. We also like that they already have updates on what they've accomplished. So you probably remember this, but he's referring to um after we took all of the data that we had and created this report, one of the things that we included after we got done um setting the goals and strategies was um we put a section in for progress to date on things that we were already going to plan on doing. So they really appreciated that. Um, so I wanted to let you know that uh I can show you. I've sent the certificate to you.
Yeah.
But ju- just for the.
And we'll share that on social media and uh.
Yeah. Okay. And I just want to thank everybody again uh who participated in this. Um, especially uh the 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 primary team, the primary committee that that stuck with this and had many more meetings than they expected to have when we started. And that um I should also tell you that Susan Kelly, who's the Vice Chair uh of this committee, has already started working on the second uh phase of this, which was to incorporate additional domains. Remember, we only we selected three domains for the primary for the first action plan. But we always intended to follow up on um the domains that would impact uh social isolation for elders. And so Susan has already started to work on that. She already has a document that we're going to be uh reviewing already. So we're going to work on these two things concurrently. So our next steps will be to fill in the action plan uh and try to um uh do our best to assign what departments or people we think might have need to be responsible for um following up on the actions for housing, transportation, communication, and information. So that's where we are right now. And again, just for the record, I want to thank Susan Kelly, Ramakrishna Penyumarti, Kim Bales, Michael Blanchard, Ann Daly, who we're really going to miss, um Dottie Fulgenetti, who has played sort of double duty on everything here, uh Jean Perrinello and Ernest Smith. And of course, uh Joanne Ziggman, who was the primary author on the first action plan uh from the Old Colony Planning Council.
Well, thank you so much, Kathy, and I really hope people take a minute to read this um action plan. It's not a heavy read. And it really makes you look at everything differently and in all that you do and your work and look at it through the lens of how can we do this better for communication? How can we do this better to help people stay in their homes and and transportation? But everything, even just when you're going shopping, uh you know, looking at the sidewalks and how easy are they to navigate? Is there something blocking people's um access? It really has opened my eyes to things that I never really thought about before. So um everyone on that that committee, bunch of overachievers, I will say. And everybody had a great contribution. So um we really appreciate you leading that and um volunteering to continue it as well.
Thank you.
Any comments from anyone on the board?
Just to thank you, Kathy, for all you continue to do for the town of Easton.
Oh, you're welcome. Uh, it's an honor.
Thank you for the continuing efforts. It's it makes a difference and helps a lot of people.
Yeah, and and just echo uh both Mark and and Craig. Thank you so much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you to the committee for fantastic work.
Sure.
All right, well.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. Bye-bye. Okay, so next up, we have um some one-day liquor licenses. So the first one is the Stone Hill College Equestrian Team Banquet. Stone Hill College, Donahue Hall, three twenty Washington Street, Eastern. This is from May first, two thousand and twenty-two, from five P M to seven P M. The applicant has applied for a one-day all-alcohol license for the Stone Hill Equestrian Team Banquet. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. Greg?
I didn't even know they had an equestrian team. That's fascinating. Um, I'm I moved to to approve the one-day liquor license for the Equestrian Team Banquet. Three twenty Washington Street, Eastern, May first, two thousand and twenty-two, from five P M to seven P M.
Second lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. The next one is another Stone Hill College uh for the senior student athlete reception. This is going to be at Donahue Hall on three twenty Washington Street, Eastern, May second, from six thirty to nine P M. Um, this is also a one-day, oh, this is a beer and a one-day beer and wine license for this event. And an Eastern Police Detail is not required for this one either.
I move to approve the Stone Hill College Senior Student Athlete Reception. Donahue Hall, three twenty Washington Street, Eastern, May second, from six thirty P M to nine P M.
Second lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Next, we have a vote to accept a gift um to the Conservation Commission from Eagle Scout candidate Jacob Napoody. Um, Jacob completed his project to create a pollinator garden at the Wheaton Farm Management Area on Bay Road. Mr. Napoody would like to donate the remaining funds from his fundraising efforts to the Conservation Commission. He requests that the total amount of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents be used for preservation and management of Wheaton Farm. If approved, the money will be deposited in a newly created account for this specific purpose. I think that this is fantastic. I mean, these Eagle Scout projects really blow me away with their thought and the fundraising and the business aspect that they have to have. And then to have some money left over and be willing to donate it back into that maintenance was really, that hasn't happened before, and uh what a great idea. Anyone?
Very generous of uh of Jacob.
Absolutely. Very generous, thoughtful, and all these, so many of these projects benefit the town, not just financially by giving the leftovers to to the to a commission, but um a lot of these projects benefit the town of Easton. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I I appreciate Dottie, too, that you've recognized, and um I know we've got an Eagle Scout uh with an award coming up that we're, you know, some of us will be able to attend here soon, and and that project and and the benefits to the community there, too. I it's fantastic. I was not a Boy Scout growing up. And to see so many Eagle Scouts in this town, which I remember growing up, one Eagle Scout, and and because it's not an easy thing to achieve. And then to see them giving back and doing so much for this community and then opening our eyes as well. And knowing that we've got these future leaders growing and coming online in our community that are are going to benefit the whole of society. This is fantastic. So, thank you.
Agreed. The thoughtfulness and the impact is just really outstanding.
It really is. So um thank you not only to um Jacob, but to to all the scouts and their leaders that really put in a lot of uh a lot of time and guidance. So with that, um if somebody would like to make a motion to accept that gift for the Conservation Commission?
Move to accept the generous gift of Jacob Napoody, amount of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents for the Conservation Commission for the use at Wheaton Farm Management Area.
Second lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. All right. Next up, we have the Town Administrators Fiscal Two Thousand and Twenty-three Budget Change Memo Number One. Honor?
Uh, sure. Dottie, would you prefer um? I don't have a PowerPoint for this. Do you want me to pull up the the summary table from that memo? Everyone has already received it. You all have the packet, um but.
Sure, you can do that.
Just save one moment to uh download it quickly.
Yeah, there's a pretty nice table in there of the adjustments.
Right. Thought that would be uh worth highlighting. Uh, bub-bub-bub-bub. Sorry, wait. Uh, does that work for everyone?
Yes, it does. Perfect.
Great. So uh since the preliminary bu- budget was published at the end of February, we've been working with department heads and the Finance Department and Schools to take a look at uh uh where uh our forecast for uh May Town Meeting is holding up, and uh as is typical, uh at this point of a budget process, we release a series of change memos, one, two, sometimes three, uh to take us from our preliminary deficit, in this case, one point one million, uh into a uh produced balanced budget before Town Meeting. So uh the good news is that since that first cut of the budget, we have reduced the deficit uh by uh over eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so now the deficit stands at uh three hundred and seven thousand and change. That's through a combination of adjustments to both for revenue and expense sides of the ledger. Uh, and as we just noted, the summary of those changes is shown here on this table. It's a little bit dense, but it it covers everything that you would need to know. I'm going to just touch on a few of those categories, starting with uh revenue and then going to the expense side. So uh on the revenue adjustments, uh you'll notice there's no adjustment to state aid uh that's worth noting. Um, as the board is aware, the town has, and we're going to continue to lobby uh for more equitable state aid uh distributions, given the historic revenue increases the state has seen in the past couple of years. Um, we're not doing this alone. The MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, and innumerable colleagues of ours and in the education space are doing the same uh as far as unrestricted aid and minimum aid for Chapter Seventy. Uh, but for now, we are in a holding pattern because the next iteration of the state budget has not yet been released, so we're still working off of the numbers from the Governor's Budget Proposal in January. Uh, I believe we are anticipating the House and Senate iterations of the state budget to come out this month. Uh, so depending on where that is and what other work we do, uh hopefully, we can refine this more for two weeks from now, when we have all the department heads come in and present their budget requests. Um, hopefully, we're we're closer to balance there, and there's some good news on uh the state aid front. However, um it it I am a broken record on this front, but I can't present a budget without noting that if state aid is not meaningfully increased from the current budget proposal, it's not going to just harm our revenue position in this coming year. It will harm our revenue position in every future fiscal year uh because of the compounding effect, and it's going to really uh uh pretty significantly increase the structural revenue deficit and force an increased reliance on our other uh revenue funds such as taxation and reserves. So uh nothing new to report on state aid uh yet. We'll obviously keep a close eye on that iterative process. Local receipts, uh uh we have bumped up by a hundred thousand dollars. This is a revenue category that's performed very well uh historically. You know, it's kind of the inversion of the state aid story, but this has grown four percent, six percent uh in some years, but just because of how small it is compared to state aid or taxation, it it's not enough to kind of overcome that revenue gap. Uh, but there are some categories of receipts that uh three-quarters into the year are uh exceeding ninety percent of our estimate for the full year, which is great. Um, that's, you know, local receipts are more elastic to the general economy locally, so you can uh look at things like motor vehicle excise and meal tax collections as a good indicator that folks are uh spending money in the local economy, and that uh i- is trending favorably uh for our local receipts. So what we're looking at is a budgetary increase of uh four hundred and thirty-eight thousand in this category over the current fiscal year, which is more than six point four percent, which is good. Uh, the largest change uh in the budget proposal at this point, and I alluded to this in the preliminary budget, was that um because of the stressors on the expense side of a budget with fixed costs, our anticipated labor costs in the the current inflationary environment, but also the the persistent challenge on revenue from the state uh that we would need to consider um utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funds uh for revenue replacement, which is an eligible use of that program. Uh, we did not, uh I believe, rely on that to balance the fiscal twenty-two uh budget. Uh, but we have basically two and a half fiscal years in front of us, fiscal twenty-three, four, and a portion of five, during which we could utilize some of the town's direct aid from the federal government uh to uh close revenue gaps while hopefully state aid and other local receipts rebound. So what we're proposing doing here is actually reducing the amount of local free cash, so of local reserves as a revenue source by a quarter million dollars from the initial budget proposal, and increasing um the net one uh funding by putting seven hundred and fifty thousand of those ARPA funds in. So you get a net of a half million increase in this other and reserves category. Again, this is reducing our local reserve spending and actually preserving our local capital capital and reserve capacity. But it is using ARPA, um which, you know, is a a judgment call because it's one-time money. The performance period is a few years, uh which is great. And this is a explicitly and much touted uh eligible use of these funds. This is what legislation was designed for. But I can't, you know, I'm not going to try to just kind of stick that in on the ledger and not draw attention to it. Uh, I'm, of course, open to hearing the perspectives of the board and Finance Committee, but in my opinion, the alternative of uh sticking to the lower amount of only local reserves uh when we're facing these revenue challenges would force really painful service cuts when we're still not even built back from where we were pre-COVID from a staff and service perspective. So I think in the balance, uh this is the right thing to do. We have more than sufficient capacity in our ARPA uh anticipated revenues to do this for this year, the next, and a portion of the following fiscal year. Um, but unless there is significant uh good news coming from the state, uh we are going to be uh considering a potential service reductions once ARPA expires. So uh again, we're we're protecting our local reserve capacity so that when ARPA is over, we'll be in a otherwise better situation than the already good one we are in on that front. Uh, it but it's it's not an easy call. So um before getting on expenses, does anyone want to touch on that or?
I do have a quick question for you, Connor. Um, while it's fresh in my mind and we're on the topic. Um, so using these funds to close the gap, um what did you say? It represents seven hundred thousand dollars?
Seven fifty of ARPA.
Okay, seven fifty. Um, I I I don't know if it's a good idea, a bad idea, but there are some questions that could come into my mind uh as as I'm hearing this. Um, what else could these funds be used for? And before you answer that, because I'm trying to paint a picture of where my head's going, what else could those funds be used for? And after two and a half years, which I believe is when you mentioned it runs out, um is it use it or lose it? Or?
Yes.
How does that work? Okay.
So, yep. Sorry, you was there a third?
No, that that's good for that cluster, and then I have a couple other questions after.
Yeah, so it's a good question. So um if you recall, in December, I I issued what we kind of call the Phase One ARPA Report, and ARPA um has a variety of areas of eligible expenses, including water, sewer, um costs associated with COVID, so like the booster clinics we ran, uh educational programming. This proposal doesn't change any of what was in the town's preliminary ARPA plan. So a couple of highlights from that plan were funding for Full Day K. This funding doesn't harm that. Um, tutoring, this funding doesn't change that or it or take from that. Um, funding for the Taxation Aid Committee uh for uh income-qualified residents, this funding, this proposal wouldn't touch that. Um, so there's a variety of what you would call programmatically eligible expenditures, things like mental health resources, uh educational resources, first, you know, COVID and other public health-related resources. And and our our first-phase plan um covered, I think, quite a few of those really important areas on both the town and educational side of the house. Uh, we deliberately, when we published that plan, didn't um speak for every single possible dollar of the grant award because we knew that there would be more items that came up as we worked through the budget cycle. So uh that's kind of the answer to what what it can be used for. So it can be used for those programmatically eligible things, but also just for general revenue replacement. And when you use it for revenue replacement, as I'm proposing here, uh it it it's effectively treated as any other revenue source. It could be used for anything within the the annual budget that's traditionally associated with the governmental budget.
Okay.
And then your next. Yep, sorry.
That was, that was, that was everything in in those questions. Um, I mean.
Well, you asked if it if it goes away. The answer is yes. If we don't spend it, it 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 gets returned. So um the money has to be used. Uh, or it it is returned to the the U.S. Treasury. Um, and so we're obviously not being flip about that, but um this is a.
We can use it to preserve uh our our uh reserve funds, then I'm all for it. Um, but just to paint the picture in full for me, uh I mean, I I know this, it's it's almost an impossible thing to answer. So the way I look at this is, we can use these funds, it will preserve our reserves. Operations continue. That's great. Um, if we didn't use these funds, then we would have to spend our own reserves to balance the budget, or there would have to be an elimination of some programs or positions.
Your local jobs. Yeah, you you.
Yes, yep.
Right.
Then the question to me then becomes, uh if we were to go down that path, which I I don't support going down that path, but it's a question that's valid. Uh, what would be eliminated? Uh, and I know that's like impossible to say because maybe it's not impossible, but it's it's a very hard question to answer, but that's what's going through my head. Uh, and and I also want to say that I do support using these funds for that.
Sure. I appreciate that. I don't have a a list um of particular programs we would necessarily cut, but I think that um and you you're right, Mark. We've all, we've been through this uh kind of dynamic, and and folks will sometimes say, oh, well, you know, they always say they're going to cut, but we we all lived through COVID and fiscal twenty-one. We cut twenty-six jobs between the town and school government, right? So I would say that would be an instructive. I'm not suggesting that the circumstance we're in right now is parallel to that. Thankfully, it's not. But we are not yet at a point where we've restored uh that those positions. We're still um on the town government side, the leanest from a staff perspective. We've been in a minimum of five years. So um, there's nowhere left, as we know, um you know, to to kind of cut without uh damaging a service, and the same is true for the schools. So if if we if we proceeded um with what our current expectations are on the state revenue side, you are right, our choice would be to start spending down local reserves when another funding source exists, which is ARPA. Or um, you know, potentially uh severe uh service cuts at a time that we're on the out of the other side of our pockets, funding new programs, which would I would imagine from a constituent perspective, be pretty uh bizarre. So um.
Well, I I I chuckle because um I cannot think of a an intelligent reason to not do this. It seems very obvious to me.
I appreciate it. Yeah, we've 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 taken um ARPA, as you all know, incredibly serious here and made it our business to uh um kind of a pour over it. So and this this helps preserve town and school service by virtue of going into the general fund, which is what the legislation was designed to do.
That is all my questions. Thank you, Connor.
Thanks, Mark.
Honor, uh I think it might be helpful, or is it helpful if you were to articulate what you anticipate seeing from ARPA in terms of direct aid from from the feds and the money that's in the 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 coffers of Bristol County Commissioners right now?
Uh, it would, and I am very happy that I published that on the internet, so I can check very quickly. Uh. We are anticipating roughly two out of every three dollars of our award to go to the county, and so what what we've taken to uh internally is basically anything that's programmatic. We're seeking funding from the county on because the county has actually, to their credit, set up a a good process where they basically pre-audit you on the front end. So revenue replacements are much more straightforward um rule, which is uh you can use up to ten million, even if you or the total of your award, which in our case is not ten million, over the performance period. That's it. Um, so we're going to use the local funds we've received from the state, which is I believe, two point six, something in the area of two point six million from the state. Yeah, uh, two point six approximately million will will come to Easton directly through the State Department of Revenue. Uh, approximately four to four point two million that Easton will be eligible for is going to Bristol County. And so what we've done, we've actually already started applying to the county and receiving some funds, which is great um for the programmatic elements of our ARPA plan, and we will continue doing that. Uh, so the two, what we would consider is using the direct funds from the Department of Revenue that we have received half of and will receive the rest of um for the revenue replacement because it's more simplistic uh from an accounting perspective. Uh, whereas we will seek the funding from the county for the programmatic spending because we actually get a benefit. It it it's a little slower on the front end, but it goes through an audit process and gets effectively a bill, a clean bill of health from auditors, saying this complies with the um hundreds of pages of regulations on the programming front.
And that that money is available until the second half of fiscal twenty-five as well?
So uh funds must be encumbered by the end of December, two thousand and twenty-four. They can be spent through two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that the uh county commissioners have made the process um straightforward and uh fair based upon the the initial conversations about they weren't sure how they were going to do that.
And and for anyone who's might be watching, and our our ARPA plan is online. It's at easton.ma.us/ARPA. Um, and so this will be one of the components we update uh in that ARPA plan. We had assumed a certain amount of revenue replacement at that time. Uh, we are leaning on this more heavily now than we had uh forecast, but again, we we did not speak for uh the totality of our potential award at that time. So.
So I'll just two comments. One is uh the transparency is fantastic. The fact that you quickly turned to where you'd already had published online for e- everyone and anyone to view uh both what came directly to us and what you have to apply through the county for. Not to mention all the work you did on the front end to make sure the county was um responsive to every, not just us, but all the communities whose money they've been custodians of, right? So, second. So second piece is the response. It's just responsible what we're doing and, um. I'll, I'll labor that point that, uh, when, when we are two and a half more years into this and we look at. The thought that was put into it and why we're not in a, um, you know, stressful situation, because we. You know, thought about and use these funds, uh, so, so carefully and thoughtfully. So, I, this is, uh, yeah, great. Thank you.
So I just, I, I'll just add, you know. It would be easy to look at this like it's, it's a windfall and it's really not, because the purpose of it is. It is to fill the gap of the loss, the tremendous losses that we've had, um, in revenues during COVID. But it's also a really delicate balance between, you know, like you said, Connor, creating, uh, creating. New programs that are not going to be sustainable after the period of time and, um. But we have really strong needs for closing the education gap that COVID also caused with, you know, uh, some learning loss and. And really important things like that. Um, like you said, Jamie, I think this is very responsible and it's a very conservative approach. That's why there was a little bit of money left that we didn't, you know, we don't always just go and try to spend every dime of it. Because you know, there's going to be some zigs and zags along the way. But I think that we need to remember also is that, you know, simple math is we can only raise taxes two and a half percent a year. About three quarters of our municipal budget is on. Our staff, our, our, our teachers, our police, our fire, DPW, town hall. And those health insurance costs go up more than two and a half percent a year. Electric costs, gas costs, operational costs, fixed costs go up more than two and a half percent a year. So how do you, how do you realize that in your own budget? If you're not, if you're, unless your wages go up enough to meet these. We're always going to be behind the eight wall. And, um, you know, we also every year look in the budget, because I don't want it to be like. Oh, the every year it's gloom and doom. They're always saying this, but I think people can understand it in terms of their own budget. And to make up that gap, we do lots of things, we move things around, we reorganize, sometimes we have to make cuts, we look for ways to save money. We've saved a tremendous amount of money, um, in our green energy work over the years. But it's almost like for every dollar you save, you're, it's chasing you all the time that you, that you're trying to make up that, uh, make up that money. So. I think that this is a real breather and it is helpful and we're able to achieve some of these, but I, I don't think we can lose sight of the fact that. It's, it doesn't solve the structural revenue deficit problem.
No, it doesn't. Um, and I, I appreciate that. Um, so there's no more question on revenue. I'll just, uh, cover expenses, uh, quickly, uh, not a, not a ton of major changes here. Although the ones we made are generally in a positive direction. Uh, educational assessments from, uh, regional schools, uh. Uh, while still substantial, uh, you know, ten plus percent are lower than the fifteen percent we had, uh, earmarked. So we've reduced those, that, uh, regional school assessment line is being reduced by seventy thousand from the preliminary budget. Snow and ice and deficits. So we do have a small, uh, deficit. It's closer to sixty thousand, but that is small enough that we intend to address it. As a fiscal twenty two budget supplement out of available funds, rather than carrying it into the next fiscal year. So, uh, we will still pay sixty thousand out of available funds, uh, but the net effect on the, the ledger for fiscal twenty three is you're reducing that deficit. From, um, one fifty thousand to zero, which is great. Uh, operating budgets, uh, for the town, uh, we increased by about fourteen thousand. And that's, uh, reflecting what everyone here, you know, experiences in their life when gas is more expensive for you. It's more expensive for us. We have an awful lot of vehicles. Uh, so that's, that is what that is, is a reflection of increased, uh, fuel costs, uh, carried in a variety of town budgets that have vehicle fleets. We netted, uh, some of that out, uh, by in the Health and Community Services Budget. Uh, which was reducing the town share of chapter one fifteen veterans costs, uh, benefits from two twenty five thousand to two hundred. Uh, this is something, um, I believe, uh, Dottie and a few other members of the board have been here for, uh, particularly with the current leadership, uh, of that department. Where, uh, at first glance, it sounds, oh no, you're reducing those benefits, but those benefits are, are means tested. And so that department has worked very hard through the consolidation of overlapping jurisdictions to connect up folks who would qualify. Uh, for these, uh, benefits with existing state and federal benefits or, um, with employment. And, uh, when those folks are no longer qualified, that's actually, uh, usually a huge success, uh, for their finances. So. Uh, this trends closer to what we're actually, um, uh, using. And so we think we can, uh, shave that margin down a little bit there. So the net there is a reduction of the expense increase by about two hundred thousand. Uh, you couple that with a six hundred thousand dollar, uh, increase in anticipated revenue and, uh, that cuts the projected deficit from one point one million down to about three hundred thousand. So from here, um, obviously we're going to all be glued to the, uh, proposals coming out of the House and Senate at the state level. And wherever that lands, we're then going to need to, to, to go back and look at, uh, the revenues and expenses further. And see if there's any revenues we feel we can responsibly, um, adjust our expectations upward on. And if not, it's going to have to come out of the expense side. So. Um, and all of our department heads will be in on April twenty fifth and twenty seventh to go over their, their, uh, budget requests in, uh, a lot of detail. And, uh, they always do a great job. So we'll all learn more at that point.
And all these presentations are on the website as well as the budget book from last year that people can take a look at if they want to do a refresher and. Uh, the great book, um, an award winning book, I'll say, because we have won the award, the GFOA award on that two years. Um, but it gives, it's, there's a narrative in it that paints a picture of what did the department want last year? What were they hoping to achieve with that? Um, so I think that that's really great information looking towards the next, the next budget. Any other comments, questions? Well, great job on that, Connor. Thank you for keeping us up to date and, uh, the people at home and making it easy to understand. Some of the. It took me a, a number of years to understand some of the concepts behind that. So, um, you've made it very digestible.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So next up we have a review of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty two annual town meeting warrant draft, and we have a number of warrant articles here.
Actually. With the capital budget?
We skipped, um, the capital budget, but I am sensitive to, uh, we do have a number of guests here, so I'm more than happy to. Uh, put myself after them for that and not monopolize that. So, uh, Dottie, it's your call.
Um. Why don't, why don't we do the warrant articles first so that we don't feel rushed to get through the capital budget part?
That's fine.
You know, that is important.
Sure.
So we can move, uh, who are we moving? Stephanie?
I believe Stephanie and Tom Broussard, uh, for the CPA, and then Greg Strange will join us for planning. Uh, it's planning night. I think you have, uh, four hundred articles to review.
Good thing I took a nap this afternoon. Just kidding.
I think all that.
Hi, Tom. And also Connor, if we could, Greg Strange, I think was also joined.
Okay. And as well for CPA, so we'll move, uh, we can move Greg.
Yeah, just moved him.
Promote panelists. Okay.
Hello, Stephanie. Hello, Thomas.
Good evening.
Everybody.
Hi, Tom and Stephanie.
Good evening.
See everybody.
So while Greg joins, just for the, the board's, uh, refresher in your packet is the newest iteration of a warrant, uh, dated today. You have, uh, most of the CPA articles, and I believe all of the zoning articles. Um. Uh, I, I would, unless, um. Tom or Greg indicate, uh, to the contrary, I would ask and suggest that you vote to include all of these and depending on, uh, where, uh. Tom, Greg and Stephanie feel the, the language of your articles are, also consider a recommendation and we'll keep track of those votes as you go.
Great. So the first one is article fourteen. And that is reserve additional fiscal year twenty twenty two, community preservation funds.
It is. So Stephanie, do you want to take the lead in going through the mechanicals or, uh? How has this been handled in prior years? This is happily my first endeavor going through these, from this perspective side of events.
Okay, um, we can tag team it, I guess. That, that would be fine. I've generally helped.
I don't mind taking, taking the start and Stephanie can fill in details and.
That sounds good to me.
Has a tremendous amount of historical. So article fourteen, um, basically is really a, a good news item. Uh, I think as most folks know, uh, just stepping back for the edification of everyone. Uh, first of all, the, the Community Preservation Act and, and the committee that we are fortunate to be members of was founded in two thousand. Um, in Massachusetts, actually September of two thousand. And credit to Easton, very quickly in two thousand and one, we adopted this. And really what it does is it provides a, a community, a town like ours, the opportunity to focus on four key tenants. That include affordable housing. Uh, preservation of historic resources, uh, open space preservation, uh, and certainly recreation. Um, and then we do that through a surcharge. And, you know, I think that's very important to note that our community stepped up back in two thousand and one and fully supports. Uh, the fact that those four items are very important to the fabric of who we are. And. You know, Jamie, I think of, uh, the comment you made earlier about the number of Eagle Scouts that Houston seems to manufacture. Um, you know, I'd like to think that it also goes hand in hand with the values that we espouse. And, uh, those values include an awful lot of open space preservation projects that support it. And so on many of the articles that we talk about today, uh, I want to not only just give credit to the committee on our side for the community preservation. But also to the community in the town, because a lot of times it's shared projects that go together. People donate their time and efforts or materials. And while we're talking about potential funds being recommended to support that. There's a lot of effort that goes into these projects. Um, and you know, again, just a little bit of historical aspects. We're talking about projects about the Cuiset Garden, um, you know, large items, whether it's preserving open space of properties. Um, Affordable Housing Trust and projects there. So. Uh, I apologize if I took a little bit of time of the select board, but hopefully that gives folks some context for the items we're talking about. Part of that community, oh, go ahead.
I think that's a great primer, because you know, every time we speak about this, there's new people that don't know what the commu- Community Preservation Act is. And so we get questions like, well, why can't we use that money to hire more people or to buy more cars or to do things like that? So, um, it really, it's, I really appreciate you talking about that upfront, so that, you know, it's a, it's a good recap.
Uh, thanks, Dottie. And, and honestly, folks, there's a tremendous amount of resources out there, let alone the existing legislation. There is just a tremendous amount of info that, uh, and rules to Dottie's point that dictate how these funds get used. Uh, to the four primary purposes that I spoke to. And article fourteen actually gets right back into the nitty gritty of those details. We were very fortunate this year. Uh, I give credit to Wendy and, and, um, all of our town support, including Stephanie, for doing our budgets. Um, I'm happy to say that they were slightly off in the expected twenty twenty two budget, because, uh, not do anything they did. But the state actually identified more funds to match. And so, uh, again, just to make sure everybody understands, uh, while we have in our town, uh, place to surcharge on our residents. Of three percent for this program. The reason why there is a great aspect is sort of is the state matches up to a hundred percent of those funds. And, uh, the more towns and cities that adopt this, the less the state has to spread to everybody. So. Uh, Dottie, you might know better than I or, or Stephanie or Greg, but early on in the CPA, it was matched at roughly a hundred percent on certain years. Um, but overall, the program has averaged close to a thirty percent match, um, so far since inception. Uh, the state has given us about nine point two million dollars worth of matching funds. And this year they identified an additional four hundred and seventy five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And the, the law states, the legislation states that we have to allocate ten percent. Uh, a minimum of our funding towards open space recreation, historic resources, community housing. And so what this does is this basically takes ten percent of the expected overage and puts it into reserve for those three respective, uh, purposes. How'd I do, Stephanie? Decent?
Yeah, excellent.
Any questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Uh, why don't we? Why don't we tackle these one at a time as we go through them? So if Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to include and recommend this article?
Okay. Do you want to go into some detail about it first? Have Tommy come and need some detail before I do that or just do it now?
For article fourteen, that was what he just talked about.
Okay, so the four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So I, I move to, to include and recommend article fourteen.
Yeah, it's forty seven thousand, five hundred and seventy.
I stand corrected. Forty seven thousand, five hundred. Okay.
Yep.
Ten percent.
Second lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. So the next item is article fifteen, um, report and fiscal year twenty twenty three budget of the Community Preservation Committee.
And so, uh, by way of explanation on this, I am not sure it gives the full picture, so I'll add a little bit of color. Um, but we do have administrative expenses, uh, that, uh, we do run as the committee. It's about a hundred and one thousand dollars. The debt service for, uh, projects that we have in the past, um, approved is five hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. Um, and the annual budgeted reserves are in the amount of four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. Um, the only color I think I'd like to add is also, you know, our estimated revenues, um, for twenty twenty three. From the surcharge is one point five seven five million. We are, uh, budgeting for state trust distribution of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and again, I think that just adds color. The previous article was a, an unexpected increase from the state of four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um, we are budgeting four hundred thousand dollars. That is much more in line with the historical averages that we've received from the state. Um, so while I hope next year is better than expected, uh, I agree with Wendy and the team's recommendations to be. More conservative and use more of a blended average rather than relying on last year's spike. Um, and then we do have investment income, uh, of a relatively small but meaningful amount of fifty thousand dollars. So. Are, um, the amount of estimated revenues we expect for next year will be two million, twenty five thousand dollars. Um, which I think also just adds some additional color. Um. And so I think that is the. All I can add for this.
So I'll move, I'll move to include and recommend article fifteen.
Second lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bar- Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Next is article sixteen CPA funding, the Affordable Housing Trust Fiscal Year twenty twenty three programs.
And if I did my presentation accurate, the preceding two articles will support this. Meaning that you'll, um, note, I pointed out that we have expected revenues of two million, twenty five thousand dollars. Ten percent of that, which is our requirement that we need and would have to transfer, um, we do to support the housing trusts. And so this is ten percent of our expected revenues that we are happy to provide to the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, so that they can, uh, leverage it for their programs, uh, including funding of home buyer assistance program. Uh, support for a nonprofit developer to create affordable family housing on Paquana Kedav and Morris Road. And support for planning work and related administration for the town to meet our chapter forty B requirements.
Any questions from the board? Um, Jen, you're on the Affordable Housing Trust, so this is something that you, you guys have talked about.
Yes, we talk about this regularly and it's, this money is so important to the town for helping us meet our housing goals and having a proactive approach to, um. Really addressing an important need in the community. So I, I'm really excited to see, see this program continue and the value it brings to the community.
Excellent.
And thank you, Tom, for your great overviews of all of these. This is fantastic.
You're most welcome. Well, I will, I will move to include and recommend article sixteen, amount of about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Second lamb.
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Okay. And the next article, uh, seven. Okay, and the next article, uh seventeen is the CPA supplemental funding for the Town Hall exterior restoration.
So on Article seventeen, just for um, I think for everybody's knowledge. At town meeting uh in November twenty twenty, um the town supported and approved. Uh in an article funding one point four or five million dollars worth of improvements at the Town Hall. Uh certainly, uh the historical asset that it is without question deserves the support. Uh I think Article seventeen can simply be summed up as the impact of time, and I I think we've probably all gone through it. Uh from a recently with COVID, from a couple of different aspects, let alone the cost of a two by four to illustrate. Um however, in the time that it's taken for us to continue to progress through work. Items like cost of materials, contractor costs have increased. And also, there have been some other things, as whenever you begin a project of this sort. Uh and hopefully I do this justice, and Greg will jump in and keep me honest. But whenever you open up any wall or do any project that requires effort and activity, certain things along the way get found. I think a a good way to illustrate that, we had initially uh in terms of the request. Been thoughtful about trying to preserve the gutters and leverage them. And then as time wore on and we actually began to do the gutter work. What we realized is that instead of being able to preserve and perhaps cover or put a lining. That they would have to be more replacement fundamentally of the item. And I I think hopefully that's a a good proxy of it. Greg, I don't know if you have any other additional color. I know you're very active in this particular area in terms of cost structure of projects and all that.
Tom, you're doing such a great job, I'm intimidated to to jump in. Uh but but I think the hall, you know, sometimes when you dig into historic structures. Uh it's it's much wiser to kind of replace with like-kind materials and to try to work with what's there. And I think the case here, there was just, uh there's a a substantial deterioration that it really didn't. You know, it would have put in good money after bad, so you just better, better for the town to start with all new. That way, we can get another, uh hopefully seventy-five or a hundred years on the building before we have to worry about it again.
Can I just add that I'm glad Greg is on this? And in my background is my two hundred and forty-four-year-old house that I survived, I mean, live in. And uh so I I understand there's never a project that I've actually helped some contractors that have come in. Way underestimated the cost of a project and helped them make sure they made money on on whatever they were doing in this house rather than losing money. Uh if you haven't worked in in an old building, I know the town offices are not quite this old, but to the same vein. So, thank you.
Jamie, I could have used a few more clients like you in my career.
I think we left, we've lost Dottie. So I will, I will move, I will move to, what what's the amount of, what's the amount of increase, Thomas?
Uh the dollar amounts are two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars supplemental funding.
Well, I'll move to include and recommend Article seventeen, amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second lamb.
That's Bajra and Lamb. Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Okay. Tommy, you want to move on to uh Article eighteen?
Uh certainly. Flawless, next person stepping up, by the way, that is definitely the Patriots way. Um Article eighteen uh is supplemental funding for the Unionville um pickleball fields. Um just again, for historical reference, uh back in November uh twenty twenty special town meeting. We did approve as a community uh three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of funding. Um candidly, we went to market to get bids, uh and the bids came back dramatically higher. And probably no surprise, given the escalating cost structure that incurred throughout two thousand and twenty. And harkening back to our previous conversation about Town Hall. This particular article requests a supplemental amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Um and I think, Greg, if I could, I'll probably in a moment ask you to add color. Because there's a a lot of history here, and the history I speak of is the engagement of the community. Um there hasn't been another item on the CPC's agenda that has consistently garnered the attention of the community at large. Every time it's a topic on our committee, the uh community attends. Um and I think with valid reason. You know, I did my own research to try to understand the need of this important recreation opportunity and asset. Uh but essentially, uh pickleball, if you all don't know, is becoming the next new thing. Um it's grown thirty-nine percent in two years to over four point eight million players. Um and they're expected that it will have uh an adjusted growth rate of eight percent every single year. Between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-eight. Um think no further of uh Dana Barrow Center has pickleball courts that they put up. Um I can tell you that if there is open space and a court can be put there, it's getting used. Um and it's uh really happily uh crowded and highly participated activity uh at the courts now. Um so this is something that from a recreation perspective, uh we all believed unanimously uh from our vote. But the community believes fairly strongly, if their attendance at our meetings is any evidence. Uh Greg, and and certainly Stephanie, you have some history here from previous years. Like, I don't know if you want to add some color as well to this request and the importance of it.
Um I I'd like to add something. This was when we were updating the open space plan back in two thousand seventeen. Um one of the areas that um was identified as a need was making sure that. Recreation opportunities existed for the full range of citizens in Easton, including age ranges. And meeting the needs of um our aging population who remains more active than maybe previous generations. So when uh the pickleball people approached direct commission and approached CPA. This seems like a really good opportunity to make sure that we were meeting that particular need.
Excellent. Well, I apologize, my internet, Mark cursed me at the beginning by talking about technology glitches. And my internet just went out for some reason. So um anybody have any more comments or questions on Article eighteen? So Craig, do you want to make a motion to?
I will absolutely make a motion to include and recommend the additional two hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, Article eighteen.
Second lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes.
Um if I, uh I hope this doesn't, this shouldn't affect anything. But um we are getting bids. We did go out to bid, and with the quotes are due tomorrow. Um so that that number may be refined based on the information that we receive from the bids tomorrow.
So we'll have, if that happens, it'll have to come back and we'll have to vote to adjust it?
Either either that or on town meeting, love it, yes. And the CPC will be reviewing those numbers at their meeting on Thursday.
Okay. All right.
Oh, Dottie, if it comes in less, do we still have to discuss it, or is that, it's only if it comes in more?
So uh just because that's administrative, Dottie, do you mind if I jump in?
No, absolutely.
So if it comes in less, you would just amend your motion on the floor of town meeting. Um or alternatively, I believe the. The article. Yeah, uh we'll see. We'll see how close it is. If it's close, I think it's fine. Um if it if it's dramatically less, you could just vote it again. I was going to say, if it's only the explanation. Uh and this is shame on me, I should have caught this earlier. We you could have had the language in the the article itself say to appropriate a sum of money. Uh and then had the sum explained in the explanation, which is not the the legalese of the document. Anyway, I'm gonna put everyone to sleep. The long short of it is, if it's significantly off, we can come back and fix it here or on the floor of town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Because we're voting to include and recommend, so theoretically, if it's a couple dollars difference, we're still gonna recommend it. If it comes back and it's six hundred thousand dollars more, now we get to talk, right? Because we don't know if we still want to recommend it, so that's what we would do, is bring that back to the board. So the next one is Article nineteen, CPA Funding for Southeastern Cemetery Fence Restoration Phase Two.
And this project uh is a request for a hundred and five thousand one hundred, uh five hundred dollars, apologies. Um in terms of restoration and reconstruction of the Southeastern Cemetery's historic iron fence to complete it. Um so I just want to give a a shout out uh in terms of all the effort that's been going on here. Um essentially, uh there has already been private donations uh that have been identified. Uh roughly about eighteen thousand dollars, um some for fence, for pillar costs. Uh twelve thousand dollars for buying and planting uh maple trees. And just for context, to make sure everybody knows, this is the the cemetery that's largely across from Stone Hill. Uh to give you context, right there on one thirty-eight. Um. And certainly, a lot of volunteer effort has gone in um and contributed for improvement projects. Uh including refurbishing uh plantings around the fountain, uh installing new water lines, uh seal coating of the roadways. Um removing and clearing shrubbery, repairing and painting around the work shed. Um I I think, you know, this fence, just to give some context. And I I learned um in a separate example, the importance of these historic fences to Easton. Um you know, the the fence is really one of the first things that we see. It's a a historical fence for preservation. Um and candidly, uh Easton has some incredible fence work. Uh and I'm laying the groundwork for another article that will come before you all, because there is another historical fence in another part of town. Um that is currently coming before the CPC this Thursday. Um but you know, one might not appreciate, and and this is where I will certainly step off and and let Greg add color from a historical perspective. But one might not appreciate the level of effort that needs to go into projects like a fence around a cemetery. That is maintained, that while you may not bring it immediately to mind of its importance to the community. And the aesthetics and setting the tone for what we believe and stand for. It actually goes a long way to speaking about things like, you know, I'll go back to the the Eagle Scout project that's done in the woods. That's a hundred yards of 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 um pathway and walkway that you might not know. Except it becomes a fabric and a piece of who we are as Easton. And you know, we really have a lot of history in our town and and cemeteries and fences, believe it or not, are important to that. Um Greg, do you have any color that you might want to add around the Southeastern Cemetery specifically in this particular fence?
Well, Tom, when you open up a sentence like that, a lot of people shudder in this town. But I'll briefly ask, what brought Oliver Ames to Easton? It was our bog ore. That's why we had thirteen foundries. Um that's why Benjamin Franklin ended here. Paul Rivera was here, um not Benjamin Franklin, Paul Rivera. And um you know, sometimes the details on these fences, you know, is very similar to to the uh the Cuiset Gardens. Or Oak Sames Hall or the Rockery. Um you know, Faneuil Hall, right? People thought they were crazy in seventy-five when they restored that. But we all enjoy historic uh preservation, maybe don't always enjoy paying for it. But uh it's nice to keep a tie to our to our past, and these these found, these fences were born in Easton. Uh and if you look at the historical uh preservation plan done back in oh nine, if you look at the master plan. Um key items talk about preserving historical artifacts outside of Northeastern. You know, obviously downtown Northeastern is very resource-rich. Um and so this is a, you know, uh this is a nice example of uh something, you know, in another part of town. That that has a nice history to it, you know, in in a nice public location, in this case, cemetery. So always, always good to save historical items, in my opinion.
I'd like to just add to that as well. Um it also is the town's obligation to preserve and maintain our cemeteries. Um that's how we honor the deceased. So this, for me, is very simple.
Thank you. Okay, Craig, would you like to make a motion to include and recommend Article nineteen?
Absolutely. I I will make a rec- recommendation to include and recommend Article nineteen, hundred and five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And Mark. These things sometimes, and we don't realize, you know, we're really talking about, like you said, honoring, honoring our um our past. Uh relatives that have passed on, so that's really meaningful, and I appreciate you calling that out. Um next is Article twenty-three, CPA Funding for Oak Sames Memorial Hall Construction Documents and Costs.
Uh this is another one where I'll certainly leverage the historical perspective of Greg and Stephanie in understanding it. Uh but in short, uh this is the next step in uh what I'll say is a multi-part phase. In supporting uh what I believe we all would call one of the crown jewels of of our town and our community. It's right at the heart, Oak Sames Memorial Hall. Um the actual request for this year is five hundred and seven thousand six hundred dollars. Uh for historical context, over uh since nineteen ninety-five. Eastern has appropriated approximately one point one million dollars for the hall. About two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of it was before the adoption of the CPA. And since the adoption of the CPA, about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to shy of that has been appropriated in support of the hall. Uh this particular request comes on the heels of the, I think it was two thousand fifteen, somebody will give me a head shake. Uh Oliver Ames uh planning document session that was completed. Um and this is the specifically designed um to seek funding for construction documents. Cost estimating for this next phase of work, which would be completing the interior infrastructure. So think the HVAC electrical uh for finish restoration, finishes restoration. The installation of an elevator, so uh very happy to see that this project will lead to increased accessibility. Um uh for more of our town residents to be able to enjoy uh more of the memorial hall. Um it will include adjustments for the kitchen, structural repairs that are needed. Um site work as well, uh that would consider uh expanded parking lot, restoration of the grand staircase. Um so uh from that perspective, this is the the next phase of let's get ourselves smarter. Uh before we actually uh look at, which I would expect would be next year. The uh request for the actual funding of doing said repairs, renovations and improvements. Um Greg, I'd love to pass it to you. Uh you've been involved in this for such a long time and are a fountain of historical information, so please.
Reminds me of how old we're getting when I see we did the master plan in two thousand and fourteen. And back then, I was screaming, because it was gonna cost four to six million. I'm like, we have to do this all at once. And now it's fair to say it's north of that. But you know, we CPA, we have spent money on the hall in two thousand nine, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And now in twenty-two. Um and given the health of uh the CPA funds, um and you know. We know we have to preserve, obviously, we have to preserve this building, and just go right down Main Street. Start with the Unitarian Church. That was the first one that was done. Then there was the library, excuse me, there was the uh the shovel works. You know, these these old buildings uh cost an awful lot of money to take care of. They last nice hundred-year chunks, hundred-fifty-year chunks. Um and it's time to, it just makes sense for the town fiscally to to do this in one omnibus move. Let's do the whole thing, because what what's gonna happen, enough money has been spent that pretty much the next nickel that's spent on this. Is gonna require it to come up to full code, which means accessibility with an elevator. Uh HVAC, strip out all the old knob and tube wiring. Uh the people that are specialized that can work on these buildings are not getting any younger, and they were in small number to begin with. So we really need to uh, you know, we should, we need to do this now before it really, really balloons. Um and um so it's, you know, to Tom's point, a full set of, you know, architecturals and and site plans. To look into expanding a parking lot and just what's gonna be needed for, you know, for the program, so that we can get uh. You know, accurate, real, real numbers on this. And a job like this, you know, you you can't thumbnail, you you know, you need the plan. You need the experts to get in there from. The mechanicals, the structural, the historical, uh so. And we all know the building can't come down, so it'll be, it'll be nice to bring her back to her original glory. And hopefully, right, if we're gonna spend, we're gonna spend a big chunk on this, let's, let's um. You know, let's, let's get a parking lot there to um to make it, you know, the the building's been a white elephant since it was built. And the town rejected using it as the town hall, so let's, let's, you know, give it a little more uh possibility for programming. And and unify the campus with the library, so it's just, and we've we've many, most, all of you have been involved in these conversations. and we've, we've many, most, all of you have been involved in these conversations. So I think we probably all agree, it's just time to. It's never going to get cheaper.
And for people to, you know, look at the, all the work that's been done in that area over the last, you know, fifteen years or so. It's really the, the jewel in, in the middle of our historic downtown and our, our cultural district. So to have it as a performing arts center where we can start to really drive more tourism down in that area and really strengthen some of the other businesses that are there. We've invested a lot of money in it. We need it to be successful. We want it to be successful. And it can't really get to the next step of being able to host more functions that, you know, we want the hall to be sustainable and pay for itself. So once we get this to a point where it can do that, we want the programming to be able to support it on an annual basis. You know, I think people think, well, there's weddings and there's functions there. Well, they're not, there's not as many or, or the kinds or the capacity that we really need and having the accessibility and the air conditioning and things like that will really make it a much more desirable place. And when you compare that to other historic venues, the other places are all able to really have strong revenue sources through programming to, to keep them going. And, you know, as a matter of accessibility, I'm really, really happy that we're looking at that. I know we have to, but we need to and we should. We're using taxpayer dollars to, you know, preserve a building like this that some of our people in the community can't use. So I think I'm really, really happy to see that finally happening.
And it's an added economic driver to that area, which is already in economic zone. So more, more traffic down there, more foot traffic, more functions just helps us in the long run.
And I just have to add, anyone that's got children that play the piano that are six, seven, eight, nine years old, and you're going to hear them play in that hall, and now the Shovel Town Brewery is just outside in, in the lobby waiting to serve you, you can tolerate what, what's happening in there when a seven-year-old gets behind a piano. So I'm just saying, it's a, it's a whole new world. It's fantastic.
Well said, Jamie. Well said. So I'm going to make a motion to, to include and recommend Article twenty-three, five hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second lamb.
That's Barger and lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Think that concludes the CPA.
And full genetti, yes. I'm sorry, my internet is flipping again. So we're done with Article twenty-three. Onto twenty-four.
So Dottie, if I could, just before I get kicked off, that concludes the CPC's attendance tonight. And Jen, you said something that I think would be undue if I didn't share. You, you gave me some thanks for preparation, but candidly, I, I think that the thanks should go to Stephanie and Wayne from the town for their help and Gregor, Greg, and certainly the rest of the committee members in the CPC. They just do a tremendous amount of work and effort. So if, if I was able to impart any type of good information, it's because people like that helped me be prepared and they do the lion's share of the work. So just credit to the team. And it's great to see you all again.
Pleasure to see you, Tommy.
Thank you, Tom. Good to see you.
Hey, well.
Thanks, Tom. You left big shoes to fill, but thanks.
Sure did.
Cheers.
Oh, I thought the deal was if I, if I did CPA, you were going to stick around for zoning.
I thought I was the pretty face, Greg, and you were the voice. Maybe I got that wrong in the email.
All right. Good night, Tom. Thank you.
Night, Tom.
So Article twenty-four is the lease of the town property for Oakseames Parking.
Sure. So this is incidental to the CPA funding, but it's administrative. So we, we wanted to put this right back to back to just be completely transparent with folks engaging with town meeting. That one of the essential functions of a future restored hall that is ADA accessible and a vibrant venue is that there needs to be more parking. There's currently, I think, twelve spots. It is not viable. If, you know, Dottie, you touched on, and I think many members of the board did, this may be the largest CPA investment we've ever had as a community. And if we're doing our jobs to look out for that public investment, we want to make sure we're actually positioning this structure for success. And that includes having access to it. We can't expect folks to spend significant amounts of money on events and then have to park in the grass somewhere and walk. It's just not reasonable. So we worked with council and what we did, this is an article that basically authorizes two things. So under standard procurement law, the board needs to get town meeting to authorize you to conduct a sale. And if you do that, you need to do a kind of sealed bid process and request for proposals. And, you know, the specs of this are going to be, you know, for a parking lot that's abutting the hall's land, and we own that land. So I didn't want us to be on the floor of town meeting in a position where someone says, so this article is to sell it to the hall, right? And us to not, to, to have to be coy and say, well, we have to do a process. And so it does two things. Authorizes that, I mean, then you need to do it, but the meat of it is a special act of the legislature to allow a direct lease or sale, which is an idea I can't take credit for. We, we took this. This is exactly what the town did with the Queesit Gardens restoration. So this would be a petition for the legislature to adopt a special act, allowing the select board to do this directly. We did a two-part article in the event that the legislature is not speedy. This reserves your right to just go through the normal process. And it makes it, we can be fully transparent with voters. This is exactly why we're doing this.
And just like everything else we do, we look at things with, you know, a lens of down the road. So, you know, you might think, well, today you can get away with twelve spots. You know, maybe next year, maybe over the next couple of years, but we're looking at, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty years down the road. So if it's, you know, like if you're going to be doing your own home and your own kitchen and you're going to skimp on, you know, a piece of it, like, you know, the nice doorknobs or whatever, you, you know, you're investing all this money. So you want to do it right the first time.
And I think it might have been Greg made a really good point at a recent meeting that if we're spending public money on this, if this was a private venue, it would, I mean, anything is possible, but you would need a lot more than twelve parking spots as part of your site plan review for a venue of a size, right? So this is, we're not looking to turn this into a stadium, but it needs to have some actual parking. So.
And I also think it's worthwhile to know that, for, for the public at home to know that we did ask to meet with the abutters and the neighbors and we had some department heads and myself and Connor last week, I think, or the week before, we met and we had one of the abutters come forward to talk to us. And we're still trying to do the outreach. We sent everybody a letter. So we, we really want the abutters to be a part of this, to give us their feedback. And we're hoping to, to make more connection before town meeting with that as well. So if there's no other questions, Greg, if you want to make a motion?
I move to include and recommend Article twenty-four.
Second lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Next is Article twenty-five, zoning amendment subsection two hundred and thirty-five, definitions, appendix A dash one, traditional loaning district, traditional zoning district table of use regulations, and appendix A two, special zoning districts table of use regulations.
You make it sound so boring.
Sorry, Greg.
Nine articles that are, they're not as bad as they look. Basically, so Article twenty-nine, really what that does is introduces self-storage into our bylaws. Given the substantial number of apartments that have come into town in the last, you know, ten or fifteen years, there has been a more and more of a request from property owners and developers to, to, you know, consider self-storage. So we have written it in, in a business district or an industrial district. It would be via a special permit through the planning and zoning board, a special permit, just so that, you know, again, keeping all things Easton, would try to like to do it a little nicer. And, you know, there's new models out there where a lot of times, actually, it's part of a mixed-use development. So, you know, instead of this big, you know, big industrial building right on top of you, it's done a little more sensitively, a little more aesthetically pleasing. So you really don't even know it's there. So. But that's in definitions, just it adds a definition for it and puts it in our use tables. So pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Any comments, questions from the board? Okay, Craig?
Move to include and recommend Article twenty-five.
Mark, I didn't hear you, but I saw you.
Second lamb. Did you hear that?
I did now. Barger, lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. That went much better than I thought, Craig, Greg. Twenty-six.
It's all downhill from there. Let me tell you. Excuse me. Twenty-six has to do with outdoor dining in the Queesit Smart Growth Overlay District. So think of basically Doug King's development behind Stoneforge, if you think of it that way, which was started, you know, it was a forty, forty C, right? That started back, a forty, yeah, you're right, that started back in two thousand and eight. There's, so this is just to allow outdoor dining. There's three sub-zones out there, A, B, and C. So we are allowing it by right in B and C, and it's not allowed in sub-zone A. And the reason for that, if you, I don't know how familiar you are with that property, but on the island, as they call it, which is really just the peninsula, there was a sixty-unit condo building, condominium residential that King Builders put up probably three years ago over the bridge. That's, that island is sub-zone A. So there'd be no need for extra outside dining out there. There's no restaurants out there.
Well, I think if it's something that we've learned from the pandemic where, you know, people really wasn't a thing to. It's really appreciated and I, I don't know, I feel like it's really enhanced the restaurants that we've had. So I think it's, it's great to be forward-thinking about this and, and have that in that overlay district. So you know, if you, if you, if you zone it, it will come. So if there are any other opportunities there, that's great.
Yeah, it's a really survival tool, isn't it, for restaurants now?
Absolutely. So I will move to include and recommend Article twenty-six.
Second lamb.
Barger and lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Article twenty-seven zoning amendment appendix A dash one, traditional zoning district table of use regulations and appendix A two, special zoning districts table of use regulations, section, subsection two thirty-five, fourteen.
Dog kennels. This, this is to make dog kennels not allowed in residential districts. Dog kennel and Stephanie, feel free to jump in here, but dog kennel is defined as what, five commercial?
Yeah, if I could, I just position a little differently. It's really to make the zoning bylaw consistent. In the text of the bylaw, dog kennels are not allowed in the residential district, but in the table of uses, it indicates that they're allowed by a, via a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. I've talked with town council about this and the text of the zoning would prevail over the table of uses. So this is really just to create consistency with the zoning.
I have a quick question. It might not be a valid question, but is this retroactive as well?
No. I mean, well, it, it already, so.
Like if somebody right now has, you know, five dogs in their house and it's kennel-esque?
The, the zoning already disallows it in a residential district. So this just makes it consistent. So someone who wanted to know if they were in compliance with the zoning, if they went and looked at the table of uses, they would think, oh, I, I just need to go and get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And such would not really be the case.
So again, Stephanie, it's, it's the number, I know people who have kennels, but they're not, they're, they're two or three dogs, not.
It's, it's five or more dogs.
Five or more, okay.
Right. As, as referenced in Mass General Law one thirty-six A.
Okay. If there's no questions or comments, I will move to include and recommend Article twenty-seven.
Second lamb.
Roger and lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Article twenty-eight, a zoning amendment subsection two thirty-five dash thirty-seven for flexible development.
So one of our more successful tools we've added in the last seven or eight years was our residential flexible development. There's Weber States up on Bay Road. There's Goodspeed States on Center Street, and there's a couple more going through the town right now. It allows us to create smaller lots and ideally smaller homes for, helps protect the environment, helps create a more aesthetically pleasing neighborhood and, and provide some small A affordable housing on top of also affordable units. So as we've gone through that, it, it really is flexible in terms of lot size and setbacks. And just having worked on it now as a board for, for four or five years, we've realized it would behoove us to have a tool where we could. Right now, there's a minimum side and rare setbacks of ten feet and a front setback of twenty-five feet. But there's been times given just the physical natures, physical, physical features of a certain site or some of the engineering or even some of the architecture to be able to adjust, to have a little relief from those numbers. So we're just looking to add that in, to give, give the planning board the ability to, to reduce those setbacks on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, anybody have any comments or questions? All right, Craig, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to include and recommend Article twenty-eight.
Second lamb.
Barger and lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Article twenty-nine is zoning amendment for appendix A dash one, traditional zoning district table of use regulations and appendix A dash two, special zoning districts table of use regulations, subsection two thirty-five dot thirty-nine.
And here's one that regarding bed and breakfast that was kind of handled during my convalescence from a very bad ski accident. So I'm going to defer to Stephanie Danielson. This one, I think she should do a much better job than I.
This is another housekeeping item where there was some inconsistency in the code. In this case, the table of uses in one section indicates that, let's see. Okay, so actually in section two thirty-five, thirty-nine of the code, which is the text, it allows bed and breakfast operations with, from four to ten guest rooms by special permit from the planning and zoning board. But then you get to the table of uses and in one section, it indicates that bed and breakfast is a zoning board of appeals, special permit for five to, five to ten rooms. And then in another section, it, within the Queesit Commercial District and the Furnace Village District and Village Business District, it's the same thing. And except in this case, it was zoning board of appeals. So you can see there, this just provides consistency, changing the table of uses to match what's in the text, which is a special permit issued by the planning and zoning board for a bed and breakfast with four to ten rooms.
Any questions from the board? Greg, motion?
I'd like to move to include and recommend Article twenty-nine.
Second lamb.
Barger and lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. All right, next is Article thirty, zoning amendment appendix A dash two, special zoning districts table of use regulations.
This is some more housekeeping. If you recall, in two, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we created zoning for the the Furnace Village District. And through that, through COVID and going through two or three planning, planners at the time, or, you know, we, there was a minimum lot depth which had been removed, but it's kind of snuck in back last year. We didn't catch it until it was too late. So we're just looking to remove that as it doesn't really work with any of the, the geometry of the existing lots.
Can you, can you go into a little bit more detail, Greg?
Well, so, you know, so one to three. So this is looking for a lot to be, let's say it's a hundred feet wide and three hundred feet deep. But it would require that, problem is, so that's thirty thousand square feet. Lots are allowed to be fifteen thousand square feet, but need a hundred feet of minimum frontage, so it doesn't work. And given the existing lots down there, you know, they're all old, older lots, there are, I don't think there are any that are three hundred feet deep. So that's why it was removed. It just doesn't work with any of the existing lots.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You want to make the motion, Craig?
Yes, I will move to include and recommend Article 30.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACs.
And Full Janetti, yes. Article 31, Zoning Amendment Subsection 235-44 In-Law Apartments.
Thirty-one's another example of how sometimes bylaws just evolve as we get to use them. Through, four or five years ago, we allowed in-law in-law apartments by right. At the time, we said we wanted entrances to them to be on the side, just so that we wouldn't look like, you know, two houses right next to each other. But there are times where, you know, the, the second entrance can be a little, can be subordinate, you know, it can be set back, it can be hidden under a little porch. So we didn't want to minimize, we didn't, you know, and, and sometimes it could become an issue with accessibility, not having it on the front. So we're just looking to get away that it has to be on the side and saying it just needs to be subordinate in appearance to the main entrance.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Craig, you want to make the motion?
I move to include and recommend Article 31.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACs.
And Full Janetti, yes. Article 32, Zoning Amendment Appendix A-2 Special Zoning District's Table of Use Regulations.
We're going so fast, I just have to stop and catch my breath. So I'm gonna lean on Stephanie. Here's another one that during my absence kind of popped up, and I think she'll probably do a much better job than I, so.
I just wanted to stop and commend Greg that we were moving so fast. So this is Greg, kudos, fantastic.
It doesn't happen often in the world of Greg's age.
I'm so proud, I'm so proud of you.
I'm gonna have a sock puppet at the end of the show, but, you know, let's, let's keep going.
Okay, this article is related to solar photovoltaic installations in residential districts. And it really came about because one of the members of the board wanted to make sure that people understood that they could have a solar photovoltaic installation for their own personal private generation. So that language specifically states that it is allowed where it's not over twenty-five kilowatts, which would be intended to generate commercial. So again, it makes that clarification as well, that this is really primary residential use in the residential district.
So, so it's not on the roof, it's separate on the, on the, on the property, is that what it means?
It, it could be on the roof, it could be next to the property. Again, this was not disallowed previously, it just clarifies that it is allowed.
If there are no other questions, I will move to include and recommend Article 32.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. Article 33, Zoning Amendment Appendix A-2 Special Zoning District's Table of Use Regulations.
Okay, Article 33 has to do with accessory structures. Accessory structures, think of, you know, a detached or an attached garage or a storage structure, or any outbuildings on your property. And basically what we're doing here is adding that, and you can see in line C, "Any accessory structure shall be subordinate in size and appearance to the principal structure." This has to do with residential structures. So basically, it's saying if you have a, you know, a garage that you work on cars on your property, it can't be larger than your house. Or it needs to, you know, to, to, to be subordinate, to make it look like it's sort of a, you know, think of the old days, the, the big house, outhouse, backhouse barn, where, you know, you, you would have structures that if it's larger than the, the house, well, maybe it would be set back a little bit, or if it's, you know, it'd just be in scale. Just, there's been a number of folks recently that have been concerned because they've had neighbors wanting to put up very large industrial-type buildings in residential neighborhoods. And that this, this came out of some concern from citizens.
Is this retroactive?
No, I mean, it's never retroactive. I mean, you're always pre-existing, non-conforming, you know.
Can you say that again, Greg?
Right, I mean, it would, I, no, it's, it's never retroactive. It would be from here forward, you know, once, once it passes, if it were to pass.
All right.
If there are no other questions, I will move to include and recommend Article 33.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACs.
And Full Janetti, yes. And now to the last one, Article 34, Zoning Amendment Appendix A-2 Special Zoning District's Table of Use Regulations.
So this, I think Stephanie and I agree, this is some more housekeeping. If you, last year in the Queeset Commercial District, we changed the ratio for mixed-use projects. Originally, it was two-thirds residential, I'm, I'm sorry, two-thirds commercial, one-third residential. We switched it to two-thirds commercial, I'm sorry, two-thirds residential, one-third commercial. But however, in this section, it just, it escaped us. It's one of those things in zoning, it kind of popped up somewhere else. So we're just changing, we're just, just correcting so that this matches the bylaw.
Okay.
Two-thirds commercial and one-third residential, is that correct?
No, the other way around, two, two-thirds, two, yeah, two-thirds.
Two-thirds residential, one-third.
Right, which that was voted, that was approved last year. There was just one part where it popped up and it still had a, it just headed backwards. So we need to correct it.
Okay. If there are no questions, I'll move to include and recommend Article 34.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
ACs.
And Full Janetti, yes. Terrific. That looks like it's it for you guys. I appreciate you both being here tonight and I hope town meeting is run as efficiently as this slate of articles was tonight.
Amen to that, yes. I'll, I'll be even quicker. I think we're out of here in seventeen minutes. And I, I just want to say thank you to Stephanie. Nine, nine zoning articles is an awful lot of work. And I wasn't around to help much this year, so I appreciate all her hard work and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
See you at town meeting.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna go back to the capital budget. So the preliminary twenty twenty-three capital budget.
Sure, I'm trying to share a screen and it is freezing.
Thanks, Mark.
Well, while that crashes in the background, I will start giving a quick verbal overview, a narrative overview of the capital budget, and hopefully we'll be able to pull that back up in one moment. So each year, in accordance to the capital planning process, myself, I'm the finance director working with the Capital Planning Committee, request and receive capital requests from all of our departments, including the schools, for the town's five-year capital improvement program. The bylaw stipulates the kind of competitive criteria that we should rely on when making decisions about what to fund. And it, it starts in a very kind of reactive stage, things that are replacing life, safety-related equipment before moving to proactive. Because of the town's revenue deficit, we frequently don't make it much past the reactive stage, but however, this capital budget is a little bit better. But apparently, I need a new, some new software in my capital plan because it's crashing over and over. So sorry, folks, I did email you this, so, and it's on the town's website, for anyone who's curious, so I will just talk through the capital plan that you received Friday afternoon. So the five-year plan, which is fiscal twenty three through twenty-seven, totals thirty-four million dollars in requests, of which twelve point two million are related to requests for the coming fiscal year twenty-three. My proposal is four million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand for fiscal twenty-three this fall. I'm sorry, this spring at town meeting, the large majority of this dies, somebody just pulled up a screen share, but the large majority of this is enterprise funding, so that's three point three two million relating to water enterprise. Five hundred eighty-one thousand would be funded through general fund borrowing through our normal debt service, and seven hundred fifty thousand would be funded from available funds with three hundred and four thousand from enterprise surplus funds. There's a variety of items requested for this year that despite this, you know, pretty decent budget are not funded right now and will be reevaluated again in the fall, as is our practice. So just going through them in order, fire EMS, there's new firefighter turnout gear. It's an item of thankfully increasing focus on a state level that a lot of firefighter turnout gear has PFAS in it, just like many consumer and safety products. The chief has identified PFAS-free alternative gear, so we want to swap out all of our gear now, which is consistent with the town's efforts leading on PFAS remediation, and frankly, we don't want this on our employees. The department also needs new radios. The existing ones are twelve to twenty years old and no longer made. These will be replaced. This is in the capital plan, but as we sometimes do, we include it and program it in the capital plan because we have grant asks outstanding. Keeping it in the capital plan doesn't necessitate that we fund it out of a general fund, but if the cat, if the grant does not come through, then we, we have a funding source. So that's fire. Police, police, you are looking at this fall will be the normal cruiser replacement. And this spring replacement of all of the electronic control weapons, better known as tasers, that were purchased in two thousand and fifteen. They're seven years old, they have needed repair lately due to failing components and dropping battery life. Tasers are used as part of the police department's certified use-of-force practices. Of course, somebody likes having to deploy a taser, but they, they have helped reduce the necessity of more lethal responses to violent arrests and situations of that nature. So that was requested by the department and recommended by the capital committee, and I concur with that. Schools, we are recommending a hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace sprinkler heads throughout the RO school. The system is twenty years old, replacements recommended obviously for a life safety system. So we're, we're planning to move ahead with that. The school department is working currently to develop a consistent security system district-wide. Obviously, once we Blanche James Elementary School is completed, that'll be a pretty wonderful campus with a lot of newer buildings, and so having consistency there is important. Newer technology would be needed for the high school, middle school, and elementary school, which have systems, THOBS, and door hardware between fifteen and twenty years old. So we received a preliminary magnitude of cost estimate on the construction aspect, but like any large request, we're going to kind of take this of a design feasibility and then design phase first. So I'm recommending sixty-eight thousand five hundred to begin schematic design and design development, so we have a better idea of what the true capital cost is there without just delaying the project outright. Cafeteria floor in OA has cracks, it's lifting, that's a safety issue for slips, trips, and falls, so we're recommending forty thousand there and twenty-five thousand for district-wide furniture. There are several significant and important requests that are contained in the capital improvement plan, which is an attachment to this that are not included in the fiscal twenty-three capital recommendation. So this is kind of the opposite of a traditional grant ask, because ARPA is already a grant that we have access to. It's not pending. And so we are working with superintendent and finance director and during the ARPA performance period, plan to include a K to five literacy program for roughly a half million out of ARPA funding rather than capital as well as automatic temperature control systems and rooftop units. Again, these are in, in our review eligible items under the rescue plan, which supports school H vac as well as educational supports like curricula. So we'll work on revising the ARPA plan, hopefully by summer to reflect that, but we, we felt this was a good use of those funds. Mark, back to your question an hour ago, these are some other areas that we still have capacity for that are critical, necessary to be funded, and this would fund it out of ARPA rather than the capital plan. And some of those costs, particularly the literacy program, are very important, but that's a sizable number. So we're happy to be able to pursue the federal funding there. School technology will be considered in the fall, and the remaining items will be reevaluated in the fall. IT, hundred thirty thousand for purchase of two new storage arrays. This, I think, was initially requested for the fall, but we actually had our servers go down for about six hours, which is the longest downtime I've had in my career here. We were all pretty helpless without that, so we are going to move that forward. Each will have forty terabytes of storage, more than doubling our capacity, has network equipment, support for the hardware and data migration services. Computer replacement will be recommended in the fall. DPW, Dave Field always does a great job with his capital request. The highest priorities in DPW are fleet replacement. If sixty-six active vehicles on the road, a replacement cost to eight and a half million. The average age of that fleet's nine years old, which is an improvement over previous years because we've actually been funding this. And so this budget would include six hundred twenty-seven thousand of the requested eight hundred and eighty-eight. It'll include two hook lifts, a loader, and E three fifty transit van that are included in the table. For remaining unfunded items will be considered again in the fall if funding permits, and we've also included partial funding as we try to do each year for ADA transition planning. Assessing is requesting a thousand for photocopy scanner. They need this. So this is, that, that's a, a level, anything under twenty-five thousand doesn't actually go to the capital committee, it's administratively reviewed, but we always include it in the capital budget for transparency purposes. And then water, there's a hook lift, annual water main replacement of one point five million. And then larger items like the Bay Road Water Storage Tank, built in nineteen fifty-nine, capacity of two million gallons. It was last cleaned and painted fifteen years ago, it's in need of refurbishment. There will be SCADA upgrades to it, an electrical upgrade, so you're looking at a one point six million cost almost there. And then a variety of other water-related updates. So I'm sorry to walk through a list like that with no visual aid, but my computer was not cooperating. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I followed up with you on the, on what you emailed out, so everything makes sense.
And the water capital is gonna come from the water enterprise fund?
That's right. So the table itemizes the, the largest item, so the two hundred forty thousand for the hook lift, the water main replacement, and the Bay Road Water Storage Tank restoration will be enterprise borrowing, which is something that we've been leaning on for those larger items and incorporating into our rate analysis that sets our rates. The rest will be water surplus, which is available cash.
I think that looks great. I think the capital budget is, is something that we kind of skim through quickly and a lot of work goes into that and you know, looking at it year to year, what we can't fund, making sure that it's on there so that it's, it's on the radar for us, you know, for when we're able to fund it is really important. Any other comments or questions?
I just, you know, I know, I know this is thoroughly vetted, and I know that the priorities move a little bit depending upon whatever's going on or what breaks. So I'm comfortable with this. And like I said, I, I know that it's thoroughly vetted. This isn't, you know, I don't want people at home to be like, you guys just approved five million dollars or, you know, supported it like that, and that's not the case at all, so.
Yeah, it's a very good point. It goes through numerous public meetings at the Capital Planning Committee with Finance Director, and each of the department heads comes in and does a a nice presentation on all their asks every year. So it's a handful So it's a handful of meetings every January through uh spring and it goes to you, goes to the finance committee town meeting, so appreciate that.
All right, if there's no other questions, we're gonna move on to the town administrator fiscal year twenty twenty two performance evaluation.
Oh uh Jamie, your hand just went up, was that deliberate?
It was not, sorry about that.
Okay. Um hold on one second. I moved some stuff around on my screen so I wouldn't lose it and then I couldn't find it. All right, so every year after the annual elections, uh if there's presumably a new select board. Uh or whoever is serving in that new year, um we set up uh goals and objectives for the town administrator. And those, that's our guidance to the town administration on what we wanna see happen for the next year. And it's really important because at the end of the year, we go back to those goals and objectives and we measure the performance. And and uh try to see what we have achieved from that. And um that's how we do our performance evaluation for Connor, so the process is that Connor actually gives us his self evaluation first. And then I send it to all of the select board members, they individually come up with their own comments. Um the choices are exceeds expectations, meets expectations or does not meet expectations. And we um we individually grade Connor's performance. The select would then email their responses back to me and I just consolidate them into a document by cutting and pasting. So this um I have the document and it will be available to the public after we vote on it. But I just wanna say that um we have a number of uh. We have a number of different categories that we we look at and the first one is the COVID nineteen response and public health. The second one is finance, the third one is infrastructure, facilities and public works, planning and economic development. Human resources management and labor relations, quality of life, town government efficiency and effectiveness. Communications and community relations, service and support to the select board. Enter and intra governmental relations, professional and personal growth. So um this is an extensive document, it's twenty pages long of things that we give Connor for guidance during the year. And quite honestly, it takes a long time for us to even review it and and measure it out, so that means there's a lot of work in there. Um I will ask each select board member to to comment on it and highlight anything in there that they thought specifically. But I do wanna just give the summary, I have a tabulation that I did and so for COVID response in public health. Um Connor, his self evaluation says exceeds and each one of the select board members also agreed that. He exceeded all of the um objectives there, for finance, the same thing. Um Reed said exceeds and the select word numbers all concurred with that. For infrastructure, facilities and public works, um Connor said that he meets them. Three of the select board members said he exceeds and two agreed that he meets. For planning and economic development, everyone agreed that Connor meets the expectations. For human resources and labor relations, Connor said that he meets, but four of the five select board members said he exceeds. And one says agreed with him that he meets. Uh for quality of life, Connor said he meets the expectations, three of the select board members said he exceeds. And two said that he meets um in in agreement with them. The town government efficiency and effectiveness, Connor says he meets, three of the select board members says he meets and two say he exceeds. Communications and community relation, everyone agreed that Connor meets those. Service and support to the select board, everyone also agreed that he exceeds those. Inter and intra governmental relations, Connor said that he meets them, but all five select board members said that he exceeds those goals. Professional and personal growth, Connor says he meets the expectations, two of the select board members say he exceeds. And the other three agree that he meets. So um it was really a terrific um a terrific review. When this is posted on the on the website, I'd encourage the public to take a look at it because. It there's just so much on here, um it's it's really incredible. And you'll really get a good picture as to what the town administrator really does and accomplishes with his team in the year. So I'm gonna start with you, Craig, if you wanna um you know, talk about any any of the highlights that jump to mind when you look at this.
The first thing I wanna do is just reiterate what you just said about the 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 volume of responsibilities that we have given. To Connor, um it's quite extraordinary and I do encourage the general public to take a look at all the job. Expectations we have. Um it's it's extensive. And um I I will not repeat what I what I say every year uh about the vote in two thousand seventeen. Because people get bored with that, um but I but I will say that. Say it, you want me to say it anyways, I I was I was fortunate enough to be elected to the select board. Excuse me, in two thousand seventeen and one of the first opportunities I had was to vote on the. Hiring of a new town administrator. Um and um I was thrilled to be able to be one of three votes. To select uh Connor uh as the town administrator. And I have not once regretted that decision in the last five years. So um I'm I'm really pleased to be able to say that. I I think that one of the things that I that I see is is um. That Connor is um responsive to uh the needs of this community, uh he has been a great partner uh with the select board. I think some of his strengths that I've indicated uh are around areas of the the financial. Presentation that he does, the ability to um manage the budget along with Wendy. Um is extraordinary, um particularly during very difficult fiscal times. As as Dot- Dottie indicated before, the budget book, two years running, got an a a a a national award. And um I I appreciate the efforts and the performance that Connor has given to this town. I consider, based on my conversation with other folks from other towns, I consider him one of the top tier. Town administrators in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it's a pleasure to work with him and um to work with my colleagues on the select board. So thank you for the opportunity, Dottie.
Thanks, Craig. Connor, I I I know you're probably feeling like Gary Sullivan was feeling a couple of weeks ago. Very uh awkward to to hear um all of the comments, but I appreciate you for indulging us. Because uh we we're, you know, we all wanna have say uh say a couple of words, so Mark, you're up.
All right, Connor, you ready for this? You know, one of the hardest things about doing this was separating last year from the previous year. Because the last two years has felt like just one awful year uh that never ended. Um so you know, I remember last year going through all this and uh you know, your evaluation last year was stellar. Um and it is again this year, so drawing the line um was difficult for me. But um you know, in if in one area, I think you have all exceeds expectations or meet expectations. And I notice a pattern, um anytime you meet an expectation, the following year you exceed the expectation. Um because you can't exceed everything all the time, it's it's not even natural to do that. But uh you you know, these this past year has been a continuation of the previous year and. I do, I've said this from day one, the town is very lucky to have you, Connor, uh we're very thankful. Uh you bring to the table a perspective, professionalism and expertise um that the town. A lot of the people in the town don't truly know uh through no fault of their own. Um but this town is is very well led by you and we're exceptionally fortunate to have you. So um you know, this past year uh outstanding and I look forward to working with you in um God willing in the in the next few years.
Jamie.
Yeah, so I'll say this, that um Mark's point that a lot of our constituents don't know what you do. And um it's it's part of his testament to 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 how well and how efficiently. Um our town government is being run right now. And it's part of our job as the select board members to be ambassadors and make sure we explain and we. And we get people out and you know, get them to town meeting. And so I took the opportunity and so instead of giving the perspective of the select board, I'm gonna give the perspective of constituents. Who I said, hey, you gotta come out, there's some important things on the docket, we need you out there to vote. Uh first and foremost, but secondly, I want you to take a look at our town administrator, I want you to hear what he has to say. Because tonight, there's a few things on the docket and this goes back uh to twenty twenty. To Mark's point, those two years, there's a lot of right, learn one one. One nightmare, but so they came out in multiple and I'm probably, you know, gonna give you six perspectives, I'm not gonna. Outline them all, but I'm gonna say that from six different people, they all came and said, wow, I had no idea who he was. And I was so impressed by how well he fielded questions of from multiple points of view. Didn't um uh belittle anybody, in fact, embraced all of the questions he was being asked. Uh from these different perspectives and answered them um in such a respectful way. Even when he disagreed, he made sure that he understood uh what it was that was being presented to him. And then uh gave his point of view in in a way that was very respectful and talk about civil discourse, right? That's what you bring back to town government and that's what we go out there, I think, as a select board and I and I will pat. My colleagues on the back uh on the back for this is that we have this ability to depolarize. And it's not just the ability, but we also have the charge to do this. And Connor, you do that on a daily basis and we do it when when given the opportunity. So thank you for that, thank you for proving me right when I told, asked people to come out and see you in action. And and understand what we see every day and then have that confirmed by these constituents.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Jen.
I regularly marvel at the sheer volume of what Connor has on his plate, but not just that, but what he's able to do. And and do so well, it's really almost mind blowing, like um the the balls that are thrown at him, the way he's able to pivot. Um just, it's it's really impressive Connor and I, you know, we're so lucky to have thoughtful collaborative leadership. Um who in in another skills that you bring to the table is you're just very eloquent and very savvy when it comes to communicating. Um as others have already said, so you know, thank you for bringing that to the table, it's really really important um as a leader. Uh you know, with the past two years, your response to COVID and your leadership through that has has made us very, very well as a community. And um I think anytime on your during your viewer is thinking about the things that were. Meets meets expectations rather than exceeds were because you, it isn't humanly possible, I think Mark or Karen from this. It isn't humanly possible to do everything on your plate and do it perfectly. Um and you know, that's that was the only reason I ever could even think to say it didn't exceed in everything. Um it's just mind blowing and it's also as a person who has a finance background. Um you know, when I look at the work that you and Wendy and others put into the budgets and the clarity. Um and that just the thoughts, the communications actually as it goes into that, it's it's really impressive. And we are very lucky as a community to have that, that transparency, that thoughtfulness. Um and one of my favorite things about you is that you empower your 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 department heads and your staff, all of them. Um to be the subject matter experts, to be the best um people they can be in their roles, you know. Uh you the line where your your role as a leader and their roles as experts kind of comes into this beautiful balance. And that's a really important um skill set and and asset for our community. Um so I just wanna thank you because you make my role and I'm sure everybody else is here role so much easier. Um and allow us to really be thoughtful in our capacity to serve the town as well, so thank you, Connor.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So I'll just wrap this up by saying, you know, one of the things that we love about Easton is the the culture of our community. And our core values and the things that we appreciate and then the way that we go about working with each other to keep things. That we love in this community and I think Connor, ever since you've been with the town and you know, more uh especially as the town administrator. You've been able, you know, it's like a Rubik's cube, right? You have all these moving parts, you have all these, you know, we see the list of the eleven categories. That you're balancing with, you know, um a lot of challenges. And yet still doing things in a way that the community can embrace and and really always looking at ways to better the community. So you know, being able to stand up the vaccine clinic and the COVID testing on a really short notice. Then being told to stop, then being told to do it again. You know, that's a real challenge, that's like a logistical nightmare to do that and you have the people in play in your staff that that make that happen. Uh you know, with everything that we're just trying to keep all the balls in the air to be establishing the new power medicine. Um i- is just incredible, it really, really is something that's gonna be a game changer for our community. The municipal aggregation, you know, these are big, big things that we kind of check them off like, oh wow, that's great, we're saving millions of dollars. For our taxpayers on this, you know, um uh aggregately and over a million dollars. And you know, it's almost like getting a month or two free for for many homes that are in that program. These are things that we work and we and they look routine, but it takes a lot to make them happen, so. You know, you have the pulse of the community, you certainly have the pulse of the select board, we work very well together, we can um. You know, hash out ideas together and and uh find find the ways. You're always trying to find out what each select board member cares about and how we can achieve their goals. And I think that you've got a real secret for success there and I really appreciate it and that's what your uh what your evaluation shows. So do you wanna say a couple of words or?
Um well, thank you uh to everyone aboard, I I I appreciate it. Um it's very humbling and uh always somewhat uncomfortable to have your performance reviewed, even when it's very positive, which I certainly appreciate. Uh on on a televised meeting, um but it it's 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 great and I agree, there's so much important stuff to cover. And you know, that's why we share the document online for the public, but um you know, Jan, you stole my planned uh remarks. Which was to say credit to the team, uh but I'm still going to say that we have a really, really um special group of of people who work here. Uh our staff and our office are awesome, uh they they help me uh and the board do our jobs when we couldn't do without them. Uh and we have a lot of really incredible department heads um who are the envy of our peers. Uh you know, actually, I just went to the ICMA and uh. The culture that we have of uh you know, recognizing uh folks for their strengths. And and giving them the platform uh to shine and not kind of trying to butt in uh is something that comes all the way down from your level. And and you've all worked on that and and I appreciate it and it's recognized by our peers uh when we go to conferences at um the the relative. Civility and stability that I I guess is kind of our brand at this point. Um which is not to say that there are tough calls, we've actually had some incredibly difficult town meetings uh the past five years, but. You know, we we've come through that and uh you know, another group of folks who've been really, really good are the the voters here, citizens here have been um really awesome. They have, to their credit, uh at some town meetings turned out in force. Uh in the way, you know, it's math, folks who show up with large numbers can basically, you know, accomplish whatever they'd like with a warrant. Uh but we've had some really uh difficult but thoughtful conversations uh with voters and they've they've ended up um being really good. Uh participants in their own democracy, which is awesome and we're seeing that now, we have um one of our our rock stars here, Mike Blanchard is not in the meeting. Cause he's running the citizens academy again tonight, um get more than twenty folks. Um who are so interested in their own government that they spent two and a half hours on administration and finance last week, which is uh. That's like one step away from from a a select board event. Having to hear that much about the capital budget, but um there's just a lot of really good folks uh live here and work here and own businesses here, so. Um I I consider myself very lucky, um Easton uh has been really good to me. Um it's been more than ten years now that I've worked here, which is hard to believe. Um and I hope I can uh keep keep being productive and and helpful for for the board and for the community. And uh you know, do do the best I can for as long as I can, so thanks to to all of you and thanks to the the staff here and the the voters. Uh and the residents here.
Thanks so much, Connor. So we need to take a vote to um to accept the town administrator's fiscal year twenty twenty two performance evaluation. As noted in the in uh as as will be posted on the website.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
With pleasure. Yes.
Lamb, yes.
Studings, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. So when we have a good town administrator, we wanna keep them. And uh we always want to try to keep adding a year to that uh to the current contract, which is traditionally what we have done. And so um we have uh um an opportunity to extend that again by one more year, bringing the contract out through twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. We also, we do salary surveys because we wanna try to see, you know, for our town administrator especially where they stack up in terms of other communities. And we recognized, you know, last year that Connor is not as um paid as highly as his peers. And so what we wanted to do was to do incremental um increases to try to get him closer to that. So it's a business risk to um to not have not only Connor, but other employees fairly compensated. So um we do propose on this that there would be a um a, in addition to the contract extension. There is a salary increase. Hold on one second. I'm sorry, I have uh have a lot of stuff going on here and I don't have the actual percentage here.
Dottie, it's it's three um percent in uh biannually for one more year, which is consistent uh with the existing agreement.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So it's really, there hasn't been a change to that. And then there's um a small change to the deferred compensation uh of one percent incre- increase for each year for the next two years. So um anybody have any comments or questions on that agreement?
Like, it's very fair and well deserved.
I agree. All right. If you'd like to make a motion, Craig, to um accept the town administrator's employment agreement amendment and extension.
Six thirty, two thousand and twenty six. With pleasure, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Studings, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. So congratulations, Connor. You're stuck with us for another extra year.
I appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
And uh town administrator notes, do you have anything you wanna share?
Um, I got to go to the egg hunt uh with my three-year-old and it was awesome. Uh so um thank you to, I think it was Ann Daly's last one. Um and uh it was, it was really, really, really fun. Uh and it was really great to see so many, especially after we we touched on a couple of times the kind of COVID time warp. It's so, so, so nice to see, I don't know, must have been like, it's like a couple hundred kids uh and their parents there uh and candy. Uh so it was, it was, it was awesome. Um so thank you to the the town for having things like that for families. I think it's part of what makes it a special place. And credit to the the Health and Community Services and and rec staff and volunteers who made it happen.
I just realized that I skipped over the minutes. Um so we'll do that and then we'll go to select board notes. Um we have the acceptance of the minutes for March twenty eighth, twenty twenty sec, twenty twenty two and April first, twenty twenty two.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Studings, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. So select board notes, Craig?
I don't have any tonight. Thank you.
No, Mark?
I do have something real quick. So uh last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of touring the Blanch Ames School and seeing the progress over there. Um it is incredible. Uh I've never seen a school like it. Um the best way, and I'm not gonna de- labor it, but the best way I can describe what they're creating over there is it's like the Museum of Science meets elementary education in the year twenty twenty one. Um it is just an immersive experience uh what they're creating. It's not just a a typical school with with hallways. I mean, everything's interactive. Um and it 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 really is mind blowing and I would also like to um, you know, a little shout out to PMA for all the hard work they're doing. And um especially to Sam Cedarbaum, the principal over at Parkview, who's going to be the principal of Blanch Ames. Uh he's pulling double duty over there uh for sure. Um and it was uh it was much appreciated, all the hard work that is going in there. And if you have the opportunity, I do recommend checking it out because it will surely blow your mind.
Thanks, Mark. Jamie.
I'll just say that I was supposed to be on that tour and I had, I missed it and uh and let me should know that I'll be on uh not tomorrow, but Wednesdays, this coming Wednesday's tour, but uh so Mark, I didn't know I missed you that I would have gotten a uh a tour with you, but you gave away half the secrets now, you know, it's kinda like thanks, you ruined the end of the movie for me. But then I and I just had to look back to see what occupied my time and why I missed it, but uh it's nothing of consequence. So thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Jen?
I was just gonna comment on the egg hunt as well, but Connor, this time you stole my thunder, so. It was a fantastic event. It was really incredible that the buildup for like to the two solid minutes of hardcore excitement that carried through the rest of the day. So very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. So I'll just wrap it up by saying, you know, um just seems like kind of a a tangent that I'll that I'll mention is that some of our newspapers are going to online and you know, it's really been tough because the Journal and Donna Whitehead in particular have, you know, been doing a good job covering Easton. But I'll, in my personal opinion, I think it's very sad to see the decrease in journalism. You know, that's how people find out what's going on and that's the set of checks and balances that we have. Not just in our community, but across the state and the nation. So with that said, um you know, people have been asking questions. I wanna, it ha- there hasn't been a lot of coverage or comments in there about the local elections that are coming up on April twenty third. And I just wanna mention that in the Journal for this week's edition in paper and online, uh this week by, I mean, the end of this week. There's gonna be profiles of the candidates and there's gonna be questions in there and there's gonna be information. But what I do wanna remind people is that the election is April twenty third, which is a Saturday from ten to four. And we really hope that people will take the opportunity to um to come and let their elected leaders know what they think um and let them know uh that it's important for them to get out and vote. And if you can't make it on that day, it is on the tail end of April vacation. You can pick up or request your vote by mail um ballots at the ta- at the uh town clerk's office. And there's links to all of this online. So just wanted to let people know because there were a lot of questions and I was talking with the town clerk today and she said she was getting questions from people because they hadn't seen anything on the paper. So um with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Studings, yes.
A C S.
And full genetti, yes. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night and a great weekend and great holidays this weekend for those who celebrate.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night. Take safe, everybody.